9:08. Clerk, would you take that roll call, please?
Good morning. Supervisor Brown?
Here.
Supervisor McCowen?
Here.
Supervisor Smith will be here shortly. Supervisor Colfax is absent by pre-arrangement. Chair Pinches.
Here. Okay, we're going to have the Director's Report, Planning and Building Director's Report, and then hopefully Supervisor Smith will be here. We're going to, if she's not, she's was having trouble with ICE and Willets, but she's on her way, so we may have to take a five-minute break or something to wait for her, because we want to start with as many members here present as we can to give this hearing a good showing. So Nash, would you start off with the Director's Report, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Public Resources Code requires that every lead agency that has mineral resources within their county also be required to prepare a mineral resources management policies to be included in their general plan. The Board will recall on August 17th, the Board adopted the general plan, the current general plan. The following day, we submitted that general plan to the State Mining and Geology Board for their review and their comment and acceptance on the mineral resources management policies. In your packet in the Director's Report, there's a copy of the resolution that was prepared by the Executive Officer of the State Mining and Geology Board, which recommends that the state adopt and certify our general plan as meeting the requirements under SMARA for the mineral resources management policies. So in other words, basically, we did what we needed to do and got that taken care of at the state level. So not only did the State Mining and Geology Board review it, but so did the state geologists. So we're good to go on that end. Also wanted to let the Board know that the Planning Commission has also been briefed on the priorities that the Board of Supervisors set with the Department regarding long-range planning, so they've been made aware of this. Third item on the report is I wanted to talk about a proposed building permit amnesty on investigative fees. Currently, what happens is when there is a violation for lack of obtaining a building permit, an individual would be assessed an investigative fee, or has been known as a penalty fee, or other people have referred to them as the double fee. What I am looking at doing is waiving that penalty fee between January 1 and June 1, so as to try to have people come in and legitimize their structures that they built without permits. This is being targeted at residential structures only, not commercial or industrial buildings, but residential buildings. And again, the goal here is to establish health and safety requirements and compliance with the health and safety codes. Also, it would address many of the potential violations that are out there, and also provide, like I said, an opportunity for people to legitimize their unpermitted structures. We did do research. We did go out and survey other counties. We found that two counties have at least done this program. There are many others that are waiting to do this, primarily after the first of the year, but as we inquired, many counties asked us, "Well, let us know how your program goes, because we're looking at doing the same thing." So the idea is to try to achieve compliance with the building permit process.
For the record, Supervisor Smith just is in the room.
And then lastly, November 17th, 2009, Planning Building Services staff attended a project development team meeting in the Willets area for the Willets bypass. On page three of my Director's Report, it provides a summary of what was presented by Caltrans. Caltrans estimates that the roadway structure is going to cost approximately $140 million. Environmental mitigation acquisition would be approximately $23 million, and right-of-way acquisition would be $9 million. They also go on to discuss environmental mitigation measures that would include replacement of wetlands, riparian habitat, and oak woodlands. Caltrans is going to make Oilwell Hill available for an approved contractor for fill material. This has already received a SMART exemption that was issued to Caltrans last year. And then they're looking at approximately 220 acres being acquired for the expressway right-of-way, and approximately 1,300 to 1,500 acres being acquired for environmental impact mitigation. As far as the construction beginning, Caltrans is looking at the spring of 2011, with construction expected to last four to five years, and then they're looking at having work performed year-round. And we also attached copies of recent hearings that have been conducted by the Coastal Permit Administrator, Planning Commission, and Zonee Administrator. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I got just a couple of comments. First of all, Nash, I want to commend you on this program. I think it's going to bring in some revenues for, and I think it's also it's going to help get some of these unpermitted locations, buildings out there, get them on the tax rolls, so it's going to help. And we talked about this before. I think the secret of this is getting it well advertised out there for people to come in. Another comment I made, I sent out a thing about the amount of gold that's at the north end of our county. You know, probably when gold was $200 an ounce or less, some of this ore wasn't valuable, but now it's over $1,000 an ounce. So you're probably going to see some activity. People want to look into how to harvest some of this ore. So in looking at our resolution, or this state mining resolution that they have, it certainly accommodates for the rural areas to have mining. And I think maybe your department probably hasn't seen, when we talk about mining in the last 30 years, it's been strictly gravel and quarry mining operations. And I look, if the price of gold stays up, I look for that to change in the Covelo area, in the North County area. So I just want to make a comment on that. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I support the amnesty program and concept, but would come back.
No, he has the power to do that. Our Director has the power to do that.
Okay, well, I think it would warrant some discussion before...
Well, I think now's the time to do that. I mean, he's ready to roll with this, and it's, if there's opposition to this...
Well, the idea that it wouldn't consider density, that would require a general plan amendment. I hope that's not saying that if someone built structures that would exceed what they would be entitled to have, that this wouldn't be a way to legalize that, that we would be legalizing structures that would otherwise be legally permitted. Is that the intention, or...?
Well, the intention with this is to address any structures that have been built without the appropriate building permits, but when we look at density, this is not to be confused with clean slate of the past, that did density and the building permit process, in that particular process, it was waived. Basically, it was just minimum health and safety requirements. What this program is really looking at is just waiving the investigative fee, but not waiving the building permit fees, not waiving the health and safety code requirements. It's just the investigative fee.
Well, I understand, but my question is, if I'm legally entitled to have two residential units on a parcel, and I built five, would this program apply to me?
Not on the density, no, and that would have to be treated on a case-by-case basis.
So I could only get approval through the amnesty program for the number of units that I was legally entitled to have?
Correct.
Okay. And I do think that it wouldn't at all be out of line to add on an administrative fee of, say, 10% or something like that. It's still a great bargain for the people coming in, and an incentive for them.
Well, we're going to get the fee.
Well, only the regular fee, but let's get a little extra, because after all, some of these places have been getting the benefit of not going through the process, not paying the assessed valuation for years.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes, I would concur with that, because I feel that the planning and building fees overall are probably not covering absolutely every cost in order to conduct business, if you're talking about the complexities of trying to make that assessment, which we're always undergoing review of that. I would say something like that would absolutely be appropriate. And even though the Director does have discretion to implement a program of this nature, I still think it is good to bring the specifics back to the policymakers. It's another way to continue to get the word out that this amnesty program is a policy of the county. So I would support something like that, of looking at, of covering fees such as doing the advertisements, whatever associated fees above and beyond just regular operational procedures that would, you know, be part of creating an amnesty program. I think something like a 10% or some type of a fee would be appropriate. So I think that should be considered, and I think it should come back to the Board.
Yeah, according to the agenda summary today, you can't take action of that nature on today's agenda, so if the Board wants to have a discussion to add an additional fee to the Director's recommendations, you will have to put it back on another agenda.
Well, Nash, from what I see, there's at least two Board members that have a problem with your program, the way you've initially set it up. So you got any comments to that?
If I could, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, the actual fees, building permits fees would actually cover what's happening here. The only thing that we're looking at is just eliminating the investigative fee for a six-month period that would attract people to apply for this, to get in, that would normally not be willing to come in and apply. A lot of people are generally turned off by the fact that if they come in on their own, they're still going to have to go out there and be penalized and pay double fees, in some cases, triple fees. But what this program does, it does not waive the permit fees at all. It basically says, "We're going to eliminate the investigative fee if they come in on their own." Now, by them coming in on their own, it basically eliminates the need for an investigation. They just need to come in and apply for the permit, submit the plans, go through the process, and so on. What we've done is we've prepared the handouts that would allow them to prepare a basic set of plans, and in a lot of cases, they would still be applying for the Class K already built, assuming the liability for having built these structures. So if the Board wishes to look at additional fees, we're open to that. However, the purpose of this is not to discourage individuals from applying, but to at least come in, and we want to at least get them on the tax rolls. We want to at least go through the process of getting them legitimized.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we need to give clear direction one way or another. County Council said we cannot take action today. However, we have two Board members that want to further discuss the issue, and you yourself, Mr. Chair, said the Planning Director has the authority to go forward with this. Let's get a plan, let's get it down, so it's very clear to staff as well as the Board members exactly what are the next steps to take.
If County Council, if we added a, say, a 10% fee, as the Supervisor mentioned maybe, would that have to go through a fee hearing process, or would that be under the parameters of our Building Department to do that?
That's a good question. It may have, I mean, you can add a penalty on your own when folks don't...
Right. And the process here was to not charge the penalty fee, otherwise we're back to what we were doing before.
But if you're going to add anything to his proposal by way of a fee or other suggested approaches, you're going to have to put it on the agenda, and you could put it on for December 8.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe it did state that people that have been found to be in violation now cannot apply through this amnesty and have the penalty waived.
That is correct. If there is an existing violation, they're being treated as an existing violation, and they would be subject to the penalty fees. This is only applicable to those people who come in voluntarily and say, "I would like to legitimize my structure. Here's a set of plans. Here's my permit fees. I would like to be legitimized and not be subject to the penalty fee."
And the reality of it is, we don't have the staff in your Building and Planning Department to send everybody out all over 2 million acres looking for unpermitted structures. So it's an attempt for them to come in on their own.
That's all this is, is just an attempt for people to come in and legitimize. Whether it works or not, at least we've made the effort to try to get people to come in. And A, the county would receive the revenue that it wasn't going to receive, because there was no incentive for them to come in. B, our main goal is health and safety. Get them in the process, get them permitted. And we're also looking at minimizing or lowering the number of potential violations that are out there, because if an individual is either turned in by a neighbor, or they're caught, then they're subject to the penalty fees, because it's now costing us to do the investigation. But here, in this particular case, an individual would come in and say, "I'm coming in on my own," and we would waive the investigative fee, but we would only do this for a six-month period. After that, we would go back to business as usual. This is just, as, you know, some people have said before, a stimulus program that we're offering. It's just people to come in and at least get into the system. The Health Department has also weighed in on this. They've provided a criterion brochure that we've included. I've talked to the county tax assessor. The question that sometimes arises is how many potential homes or structures are there out there? Well, it's a guess, and I would say it's probably more than 100, but less than 200. And these are structures that have been built without permits, but again, it's only a guess at this time. We won't know until people actually come in, but at least we've made the effort to try to get people to apply.
Supervisor Smith?
Well, I think that all decision-makers understand that, and I don't think a 5 or a 10% surcharge or fee or enhancement to that is going to be perceived as a deterrent. These are people that have acted illegally, probably in most cases knowingly, and if they're coming in under amnesty to try to get a service from the County of Mendocino, I think that that's certainly within our purview to do that. So I think it should come back to the Board. The other thing I think we ought to do is, if this is really something that we want to promote, and I believe that we all seem to be on board with this, we ought to do an extensive advertising campaign. And so to make it effective, I think we would justify that a 5 or 10% fee, we could have very well-worded advertisements in all of the newspapers. We could have radio spots. In other words, not just a press release that might get put out once, but we could pay for an advertising campaign to get this word out to absolutely every corner of the county. And I think that that could be explored, and you could bring it back to the Board, and that's one thing that some of that money could be used for. And I think getting the word out is going to be the key in getting compliance with this and getting people over, especially, you have to repeat things like this. You can't just do it on a one-time basis. But these things spread over a six-month period, talking about the timeframe, the timeframe's now narrowing, the advantages to doing this. I just think we ought to market this, and I believe that the fees associated need to pay for that marketing.
Well, Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support the program as presented by the Planning Director. I do have concerns related to the comment by Supervisor McCowen in the density issue, at least getting people in here. And it was qualified, and you explained it within your report. However, if it's a stimulus program, getting those people to come in and start through the process, I think would be a bonus for us as well.
Well, also, it's keep in mind that the period we're talking about is basically from probably January 1, or say, and that's the light construction season, when building and planning isn't really dealing with a lot of building permits and whatnot. So it's kind of a workload to be a good time. If we want to put this off, and add the, we can have that researched, whether we have to do a fee hearing on, say, a 10% surcharge, we can do that.
I'd like to see it go forward.
Supervisor McCowen?
Well, I think staff and County Council have heard the concern, and I'm sure that they would investigate whether the 10% fee could be added in just administratively. If they can charge double the fee, it seems like they could charge 10% of the fee, by whatever name they call it. But, so I don't know if you were, if the Director was ready to roll this out immediately, or like in the next week, or would it delay anything if it came back to us on the 8?
If I could answer that, I'd be happy to bring it back on the 8, but we were hoping to do press releases this month, and go to the radio, go to the newspapers, go to the North Coast Builders Exchange, and start contacting everybody and let them know that this amnesty program was coming. So it was going to, it was conceived to be advertised extensively throughout the entire six months as press releases. I was also going to prepare a press release for various newspapers and have them carry this, and also post it on our webpage.
So a week's not going to hurt anything?
No.
And is it, can I ask my colleagues, if they, whatever the wording they come back with, would you accept a 10% surcharge, so we can get this thing moving?
And I believe we have a fee hearing that will be commencing in December anyway, so if it absolutely needed to go down that pathway, I think we have one coming up.
Well, we can, if it takes that, County Council researched that, we can do that all in the same. But can we bring it back next week on the 8?
Yes.
So we can get this going? Because like you say, I see it as sort of a stimulus package, not only for your department, for people out there to come in, and maybe they'll come in and say, "Hey, I've got this house, and I want to get it done," and you go out there and inspect, and say, "Well, wait a minute. You've got some work to do on electrical." So then they go hire an electrician, and it goes on and on and on. But I think we need to get this, I think it's very well-labeled when you call it a stimulus package. Clerk?
So I want to clarify that we have general consensus, and read this directive back to you, and also note that we do have a fee hearing on December 15. So I'm looking for general consensus of the Board to direct staff to agendize the matter. The Planning and Building Services proposed building permit amnesty program at the Board's December 8 meeting for further discussion and possible action.
Great. Thank you. That concludes your report, Nash?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. This is Item 2B. This is a notice public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider an appeal of a coastal permit administrator decision on August 27, 2009, approving the following project, case number CDP 67-2008, Jackson Group, family incorporated, owner Mendocino Land Trust, applicant agent, Marjorie S. Kahn, living trust appellant. This is request to construct a 7,000-foot-long public access trail consisting of native earths, boardwalks, and two-foot bridges. Associated development includes fencing and signage. This is in the coastal zone approximately two miles north of the 10 Mile River and five miles south of Westport, along the west side of Highway 1 at 31502 North Highway 101, AP in numbers 015-380-02, 04, and 05. So this is a public hearing, so at this time, we will, do we have any correspondence?
First, I want to confirm that we do have proper notice, and we have received one piece of correspondence this morning that was distributed out to all Board members, staff, and the public, and it's from Rudolph Catino and Shirley Catino.
Okay, so our public hearing is now open. Staff report, you'll cover the brief summary.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an appeal of a decision. I was sitting as the Coastal Permit Administrator, and I approved the project for this trail. The Jackson Group property has a long history in land use affairs with Mendocino County. I did provide you a crude map that I just did myself this morning. Unfortunately, our mapper wasn't in today, and our project coordinator for this is also not in today. So the map I gave to you, which you have, I put in front of you, shows the approximate ownerships and relationships of the property that's going to be coming up under discussion today. JG stands for Jackson Group, which owns a very large piece of property on the coast. It has a bit of local notoriety about the efforts of the owners to develop a inn on the property. That was most recently, a couple weeks ago, ultimately was denied by the Coastal Commission for the proposal, their latest proposal to develop an inn on that property. In this case, under a previous entitlement granted to the Jackson Group family for the development of their inn, there was a 15-foot right-of-way along the west side of Highway 1, which was granted for access along the coast, and that extends about 7,000 feet along the highway. It doesn't begin or end at any particular destination point, but about a quarter mile to the north of the property is the Pacific Star Winery, which is more of a public area. They encourage people in their advertisements to come and picnic there and enjoy their view along the coast, and that's on the north end. Separating the trail on the north end are at least two ownerships, the Cuttings, or Catinos, excuse me, being one of them. That's one of the correspondence received. Then on the south side, the trail would end at the southerly end of the Jackson Group holdings along the highway. Between that and some public lands to the south, there's about a four-acre parcel owned by Fish and Game, and then below that is some property that's now owned by the County of Mendocino. It's zoned open space, and between the open space and properties and the Jackson Group property is Ms. Kahn's, the trust property that goes along the highway. It has about a 660-foot frontage along the highway. The other piece of information, the photos I sent, or put out in front of you, were submitted by Mendocino Land Trust at the public hearing, and it shows the highway frontage along the Kahn property. There is, I believe, an offer to dedicate that was, that is on the Kahn property today. There was, that property was created in a minor division, was approved by the county in 1982, and that's when the Coast Commission was, excuse me, '72. And the Coast Commission was just, the Coast Act was just passed in '72, and so that access easement goes along, or through, the Kahn property, and it's more towards the bluff side, as I recall. The concern of the Kahn family, I believe, is they have a, they already have this one easement on their property. They're concerned that with people going from what they may want to park at, or if they can, at the Fish and Game property, or the county property to the south, that they'd be walking along, their frontage along the highway to access this trail. Again, there's no beginning or end destination spot for this trail, but the trail was, the easement was created, the money was provided for its creation, and so the permit was for just the development of the trail. We did note in our approvals that we wanted it to be open for bicycle use, because there's no bicycle path in the area, and it would be an alternative to riding along the highway. The staff report is very thorough in its analysis of environmental concerns about esha's and wetlands and other things that are to be protected, and I think there's conditions that have been established that provide for protection of those resources. But I think the issue in front of you today is the applicant, the appellant's concern that this will add an additional burden to their property, be people trespassing to go along their frontage along the highway to access this trail. The trail will be entirely within the access easement, and there's nothing in this permit that it provides for any public access along the Kahn property. It would have to be along the state highway right-of-way if people were going to use it. With that, I'll try to respond to your questions.
Questions? I don't see any questions this time. I guess we'll want to go to the appellant. You have 20 minutes, Mr. Carter, to make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We want to make several comments. I'm going to show you one other picture, one other piece of material.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to give you this earlier, but then Frank was kind enough to do the picture, the map he had, and I think it's very good, but his map does not show you exactly where the trail ends at the southern end, whereas this map I've given you there does show you where that trail ends, and there's a little bit of a gap along between where the trail ends, and then the gap is this property 13 on Frank's map, and then you come down, and the Kahn property is 24. And I think it's very useful then to look at the photographs that Frank supplied, and thank you, Frank, that's very helpful. It shows where this trail will then dump people... It shows where this trail will then dump people onto this highway right-of-way, and you can see that there's absolutely no space provided for them. Now, what is, why does Khan care? Khan Trust is not, is not opposed to a trail. They're not opposed to tourism. What they're opposed to is the very poor planning represented by the idea of going in. It's like that bridge in Alaska, the bridge to nowhere. We're going to go in and we're going to build a 7,000-foot trail that starts about a quarter of a mile south of the Jordan Star Winery, or Star Winery. So, if people park at the winery, they have to walk along this highway for a quarter of a mile before they get to the trail. There's no parking facility anywhere on the Jackson Group property available for users of this trail. So, you got to park at the winery, walk a quarter of a mile along a highway like this shown in these photos to get to the trail. Then you walk along 7,000 foot of the trail, and then you get down to the southern end, no parking facility. You got to go another quarter of a mile down to the South Cabocia fishing area before there's a parking facility. Now, along the Khan property, what they're concerned about is everywhere else in the coast, if you're going to put a public access, the coastal act requires that there be a public agency that accept that access, provide for health and safety protection, so people don't throw their coffee cans, their cigarette butts, their beer cans, or anything else over on your property. There's a requirement that there be insurance, so that if somebody slips and falls, imagine a lady in a wheelchair trying to navigate this, and, you know, we're supposed to be providing public access on this trail. How are they going to navigate this area? Now, if there's any question, somebody getting run into by a truck, my client doesn't want to be subject to claims that they're not taking care of their property to protect the public. They don't want to be inundated with a lot of trash thrown on their property. If this trail is going to be built, then it ought to be built with a comprehensive planning arrangement where either somebody negotiates with my client and buys an easement and puts in the same kind of facilities that are going to go in here on the Jackson Group property, or they condemn it. They've got the power of condemnation, let them condemn it. We'll, we'll understand that, and we'll go have a litigation about it. Frank is, it's not appropriate to raise any question about a, an offer to dedication on the, on my client's property. If you look at that map Frank put out, and on 24, the area that at one time, many years ago, that was dedicated for public access was along the ocean, upland from the ocean at the south reaches of my client's property. And I've been in communication with the Coastal Commission, my client hasn't decided to file a lawsuit, but if you look in your coastal plan, it says, and I'm embarrassed, I don't remember the number now because I don't think this issue should have come up, that that dedication should be canceled because, that offer of dedication, because there are other accesses in the area, particularly the South Cabocia fishing area. So, it is irrelevant that my client's property is subject to an offer of dedication, except to say how many times, you know? If they offered a dedication along the coast there, that doesn't mean that they can also have their property subjected to a forced dedication along the highway. Now, that's the practicalities of this. It doesn't make sense to build this walkway that starts nowhere and goes nowhere where there's no parking facility. In the Jackson Group application before the Coastal Commission, we argued that they couldn't approve that project for any number of reasons, one of which was they had not considered the cumulative environmental impacts of the Jackson Group Inn project and this project. Both of them deal with wetlands, both of them deal with protected habitat. If you look at the staff report on this project, there are many, many conditions imposed by Fish and Game to protect esches, to protect habitat, other wetland areas. Nobody has ever considered what the combined impact on protected habitat areas coastal resources is, and the law is very clear. The cumulative impacts of foreseeable projects have to be considered. Now, the Coastal Commission denied the Jackson Group Inn project. I don't know why, they didn't say why. But our brief to them argued that they would lose a lawsuit if one were brought because of no study of the cumulative impacts, and I'll make that same argument to you. Your record on this case, if you've looked at it, when the coastal administrator considered it, there was a statement that there was a negative declaration adopted. We said you can't adopt a negative declaration because you haven't considered the cumulative impacts, you haven't considered the impacts on esches. It's, you have to do an EIR. Now, in the notice of this hearing, there is a statement that this project is categorically exempted. Now, I'm somewhat familiar with most of the categories of exemption, and none of them apply to this case. I don't know what the claim is that this is categorically exempted, because when you read the staff report and all the mitigations, there is beaucoup study of these wetlands and impacts, habitat impact issues. And I did submit you on my colored paper, for which I apologize, I ran out of white when I was trying to copy this over the weekend. That's from the report that went to the Coastal Commission on the Jackson Group Inn project. And what you see there, I've given you one-tenth of the material that discussed the environmental impacts of that project. When you compare the staff report for this project, you see that those same kind of resources are studied and mitigations imposed, but nowhere is there a cumulative impact And so, under CEQA, this project is dead in the water if anybody chooses to litigate it. It is not categorically exempt because, one, it doesn't fall within any of the classes of exemption, but moreover, if you look at the exceptions to the exemption in the CEQA guidelines, 15,300.2 A, B, and C, you see that even if there were a class this project could fall into, it's, there's an exception because when there are cumulative impacts or a significant effect, there can be no categorical exemption. So, CEQA hasn't been complied with. Our argument is therefore the twofold. CEQA hasn't been complied with because it's not categorically exempt. If it is, there's an exception. Cumulative impacts have been clearly brought to the fore by comparing the staff report before the Coastal Commission with the staff report for this project, same resources, no cumulative impact study.
How is this different?
But the, the more persuasive to me, I don't, I don't enjoy nitpicking on these legal points, is what are we doing? Building a 7,000-foot walkway costing many thousands of dollars, no place to park within a quarter of a mile on either side, and the only way you get to it is along this narrow little section of highway right-of-way, as you can see in this picture, that old folks can't walk on, people in wheelchairs, people with any disability can't walk on, and if they get out there on the, on the walkway and they have to pee, what, what are they going to do? If somebody gets sick, how's somebody going to come park and pick them up? This is an idea that's premature. When, as, and if they get rights of way to build this the whole way, I can, I think I'm speaking clearly for my client. My client's not opposed to a walkway if, if their interests are protected, but they don't want people walking along this part of their property dumping their garbage out and doing, and putting them at risk. Now, if you say, well, nobody's going to walk along there, then why build the walkway? So, that's the essence. Deborah Khan is the trustee of the Khan Trust. She's going to speak. She's my client on this matter. Deborah?
Mr. Chair, before we go any further, it appears that we do not have proper notice on this matter, because the staff report does recommend a negative declaration, and that's not what's been noticed in the notice. So, I, my recommendation at this point is that this matter get continued to a specific date, and you hear the matter again with proper notice.
And we don't really have a choice in that?
Well, we, we didn't, I understand that and can't do more than say we, we objected for being jerked around on this without it being done properly. Every time my client has to gear me up to come over here and talk to you folks, it's a, it's an unnecessary and unwanted expense. Thank you.
And, and we understand that. Should, we can't make a decision on that. These people come a long way, can these ladies out there, can we accept their testimony?
I would recommend that you not.
You not?
I would recommend that you move forward with a properly noticed hearing.
I don't see there's any choice in that.
Well, I, we don't have any, I, I apologize for the inconvenience and the expense that's going to be. Is there any way we can reduce their fee or something that, I mean, it's, it's our, it's our fault, right?
We're going to, it's going to drive more expense to the county as well, so.
The clerk is recommending a January 5th or January 12th date for the hearing, and then planning can renotice it appropriately.
Okay, I'm sorry. You be noted.
Well, I have a question. What dates, I don't have a 2010 calendar right before me. What, are those Tuesdays?
It'll be Tuesdays.
To counsel, we have, we have had noticed hearings before, and they've been inappropriately noticed, but, I mean, it would seem in this case that you've got the appellant giving basically the majority of their argument, then you have the other side not speaking. It just seems to me, why wouldn't we continue hearing both? I, I don't know, it's an awkward situation, but we have heard, so does this mean that there's nothing on the record, we'll start over? So, nothing that's been said today is even part of the issue?
That I would, I would recommend that we start over, yeah.
Well, when I, when I asked the clerk if there was proper notice given, if there wasn't, we should have stopped, I guess.
Right, well, it, it didn't.
Notice was given, but it was incomplete, right?
Right, well, it didn't come to my attention until Mr. Carter was raising the categorical exemption issue, and that was what was identified in the notice, and that's not what staff is recommending, and the staff notice has, I mean, the notice has to refer the actual CEQA review in the one that we're relying on. Apparently, it was noticed properly for the coastal commission, coastal permit administration, administrator's hearing, but it was not properly noticed for this hearing, this appeal.
So, I have another question for counsel. Counsel, do these come to you before they're noticed?
No.
Well, I think that's totally inappropriate.
And we'll talk with planning about that.
Well, I think that that needs to be standard operating procedure, and we're talking about a legally, a legal notice which has ramifications for Mr. Carter and his clients and, and the others involved. I think that it's only appropriate that we have a professional chain of command where these things go to your office, and you need to have expert legal staff that have planning experience that look and prove these notices before they go out. I mean, how can we get that on the board's agenda, have that become policy? I'd like to have that happen, if the chair could direct that.
Yeah, and we will direct it, because this, actually, we, originally, we had two items to hear today, and one of them was eliminated or taken off because of a rule or something wrong. Now, we're finding out, now the second one is. So, we do have a problem, but we need to get it straightened out.
Right, and, and. Well, we're going to now.
In my experience here, this doesn't happen that often, so I think there was just a glitch with both of those notices. I think the, the same language was probably included.
Well, but if it goes to your office for another review, that's only a positive thing.
And we'll work it out with planning.
Okay, so this public hearing will be continued then?
And then, I would assume, however, that all the documents submitted would become part of the record.
Okay, but we can, is there anybody, members of the public want to speak on, because the public hearing is continued, we, we will take public expression up to three minutes?
Is that?
Well, again, unless it's.
If you're.
Not on this item, but just public expression in general.
So, are we going to continue to the 5th or the 12th? I don't care.
Soon as.
I, I think the sooner the better for everyone involved. The 5th sounds proper.
And I would also request that that be a timed item, so that interested parties won't have to wait for it to be heard.
It will be.
Let's make sure that's agreeable to all involved. Their 5th is fine.
So, this will be continued to December, Janu, when? What day?
5th.
What day?
The 5th, January 5th.
January 5th.
And planning will do the appropriate notice for that hearing.
Okay, we'll try to get it right. Sorry for the inconvenience.
Oh, good.
Okay, if there's no public expression, any public expression?
Yeah.
Meeting's adjourned.
Never any shortage of things to do.
Oh, no.
[laughing]